Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Could you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to our first meeting in September, September 4th. Commissioner Laurie is the dog lady today.
We have a scared one today.
Come here. Look what I am. Look. Shy. Look, come here. He loves Gennaro.
Aw, he's so scared. See, somebody needs to come to our dog kennel and take this one home. Somebody needs to treat him really good, so he won't be scared anymore. Normally they-
Scared anymore. Whoops. He didn't like that.
You don't want the cookie, look. Normally, they bring me the small dogs, but we must be out of small dogs today, so we have a nice golden retriever. Would make somebody a good pet, just needs some love and care. Here, baby, look. Cookie, little cookie. No, doesn't want a cookie. So come down to our dog kennel and pick out a pet for yourself, and if you want to see what we have, you could always check our website if you want to make the trip down. Thank you very much. It's beautiful dogs.
A thought for this morning, some may disagree with this, probably, surely, but I'm going to give it anyway. Silence is one of the hardest arguments to refute. And, we have a proclamation for September as the National Preparedness Month. You want me to read this, Tom?
It's still empty, Commissioner.
It says some good things, so I will. It says, "Whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security has declared September as National Preparedness Month, a nationwide effort held to encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and schools, and whereas the goal of National Preparedness Month is to increase public awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies, and encourage individuals to take action, and whereas families across America need to create a family disaster plan, so that each person knows what to do, where to go, and how to contact loved ones, and whereas September 2008, National Preparedness Month will provide Americans with a variety of opportunities to learn more about preparing for emergencies, including natural disasters and potential terrorist threat, and whereas National Preparedness Month brings together an amazing coalition of partners to make citizen preparedness a priority for every city, every neighborhood, and every home across America, homeland security is a shared responsibility. This month will provide Americans with a variety of opportunities to learn more about ways they can prepare for an emergency, get an emergency supply kit, establish a family communication plan, and become better aware of threats that may impact communities. It will also provide them with several opportunities to volunteer or get first aid or CPR training. And whereas this month will also symbolize an opportunity to pay tribute to America's first responders, who put themselves at risk for the safety of their fellow citizens, these brave police officers, firefighters, and emergency service personnel exemplify the compassion and commitment that helps strengthen our country. We will be forever grateful for their service and sacrifice. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners hereby joins in declaring the month of September as National Preparedness Month in Lorraine County, Ohio, and urges all residents of Lorraine County to learn how to be ready for the unexpected. We would like to present this to our EMA Director, Tom Kelly.
Can I say one thing real quick, Commissioner? Two things, actually. We received a grant from the Citizens Corps to put together 2,000 packets, informational packets, on emergency planning for homes, and we'll be going door-to-door with our community response team volunteers during this month sometime. Picked out some neighborhoods. We didn't want them walking on the long streets that are out in the open, but places like the Crest Haven Lot in Illyria Township, we have a whole entire village of Rochester kept in those type of places, and they'll be getting those on their doorknobs. We put them in a recycled bag up there, and he'll like that, too. But, and also, we put together a one-hour presentation on how to put a home emergency plan together, how to practice that, and we've been advertising that for church groups and citizens, church groups, block watch groups, that type of thing, too, so that'll be going on this month also.
Wonderful. Tell us about the email that I got the other day.
Oh, as you know, we received the Hero's Award for an agency from the Red Cross, when you attended, Mr. Kayla attended, last month. And the State of Ohio Emergency Management Agency puts together a newsletter every two months, and they put that, two weeks, I'm sorry, and they put that article from the Chronicle Telegram and our pictures in the newsletter this time. So it goes all the agencies in the governor's office and that type of thing, all the county emergency management agencies also. So I forwarded it on to you, too. You should be seeing that in the email.
It was very nice. Thank you, and congratulations again.
Thanks.
Anything else you want to tell us? You're not going on vacation anytime soon?
No, I think I burned most of it up this year.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Gloria. Great job that you did on that. Madam Clerk?
There will be no presentation by solid waste. We're going to do that next week at 10 o'clock.
Next week? Okay, thanks.
Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Preparations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we are transferring $20,000 from our general fund into Dog and Kennel Fund this week. And what we're going to do is we're going to be putting in some fencing around the backside of the dog kennel, which will give a chance for the dogs to have an outside run. And we're also going to be eliminating the two-story cages, the up-and-down cages, because we can't use the top, and we're going to be putting in some larger cages in the dog kennels, so that we can accommodate larger dogs. We're also going to be having, I just talked to Karen Davis this morning, there's going to be panels in between each cage, so that the dogs can't go nose to nose in order to eliminate spreading diseases between the different animals. So happy to say that we're doing some much-needed improvements at our dog pound, and I'm looking forward to see that getting done.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advances repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Airport Amendment Lease Agreement with John Winn at the Lorraine County Regional Airport is originally approved by Lorraine County Regional Airport Authority in April 19, 2006, to reflect the $1 million liability coverage provided by the condo owner, plus $3 million to be provided by the condo association.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a question. We're lowering the liability, so is this in order to do some cost savings for us or John Winn, or who's reaping the benefits from this?
It's John Winn itself, and what happened was the Airport Authority approved this 99-year lease for the two new hangars that are going up. And as they got ready to implement the actual condo purchase agreements, they realized they were, John Winn was going to have to have $3 million liability insurance. Their insurance provider said, you know, most agencies require $3 million, and so we took it to our risk manager. She reviewed it with Corso, and they said, yeah, $3 million is a better level, and so what we're doing is asking that you reduce there from $5 million to $3 million. Okay?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated in summary for employees within jurisdictions in Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Commissioner, I do have a couple brief hiring, hirings at the county home, and would like to discuss them with you in executive session as permissible subject under the sunshine law. So at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, if we can have what I hope is a short executive session, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the same for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting notes from August 20, 2008.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Community Development instruct the clerk to advertise notice of public hearings for the updated Lorraine County subdivision regulations. Notice will be in the town called September 8th and 15th. Hearings to be held at 10:00 a.m. on September 18th and 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a quick question. When we have something like this that affects all of Lorraine County, is it that cost prohibitive to have that, something like this, advertised in both newspapers? I know we try to rotate back and forth.
No, I don't think so at all, Commissioner. I remember when the policy was developed a number of years ago, because we were spending so much on advertising. But if you want both papers, it's not that expensive, a couple hundred dollars to advertise them in both. So mainly the things that affect the broader base community would be like CDBG and CHIP and things like that. If the board so desires, we can certainly make sure that both of those get put into both newspapers.
Do you think that would be a good idea to change our past policy as far as rotating every, each newspaper?
Just a question. Kristen, do we send out notices to the political subdivisions as well?
The county subdivision regulations only apply to the 18 unincorporated areas. A copy of the draft set of regulations has been sent to each of the 18 unincorporated areas for them to review and to send comments to us. So they have been notified on an individual level. Any cities or villages have their own subdivision regulations, so they don't fall under our jurisdiction.
Okay, so that, putting it in the Journal would not really benefit-
It wouldn't really benefit. Maybe Amherst would get the Journal versus the Chronicle, but the majority of the township areas do get the Chronicle.
But Amherst has been notified by us?
They have been notified personally, yes.
I'll withdraw that request, then. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Job and Family Amendment Resolution 08400, adopted June 5th, 2008, approving payment of the general, county general fund mandated share is now outlined payable to Job and Families in the revised amount of $1,242,587, in compliance with ORC 5101, 16 through 161, payable October 2008 through May 2009.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
There's just one thing about this. If I'm not mistaken, it's lower than we anticipated.
The drop, little over $15,000 from what we approved in, county commissioners approved in June.
So.
Good. Instead of $15,000 less in case Kayla didn't pick it up that day.
That's good. Good news.
Thank you, David.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Our sanitary approved the additional engineering service proposal from K. McCartney and Associates Mansfield, the amount of $24,400 for the Shade and Road sanitary sewer extension. This will be paid from professional services account. City of Illyria ordinance number 200839 affirms that future reimbursement accounting signatures for engineering to be required to construct said project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Per Change Order 1 to Calsteen Inc., the amount of $2,722.29 to adjust quantities from final field measurements for the Crest Haven Waste Water Treatment Plant upgrade sewer district improvements to be paid from Crest Haven Construction.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Children's Services instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for lease of 13 new, four compact, four midsize, and seven passenger van vehicles for Children's Services. Notice being the Chronicle on September 5th and 12th, and bids to be open at 2:00 p.m. on September 19th in the commissioners' hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We don't get state bid pricing, I need?
Which one was that, Commissioner?
These are leases, Laurie.
Are the children's services?
Oh.
They do this about every two years. They found it to be more cost-effective to lease their vehicles than to maintain their fleet. I'm going to be interested how they make it. It's been a few years, so I need to, I want to go talk to them, see how they're doing with that, because we bought all our fleet. So there may be some advantages. I know they continue to do it, so it must be productive for them.
Somebody's here from, you want to come up and talk about that?
Good morning.
Good morning. The way it's written on your agenda, the vehicles that we're going to lease is wrong. We have 13 new midsize, four new compact, four new midsize, seven passengers. We're actually going down on the vans that we're going to get, so that we can save on gas. So I think right now, we have like about 10 vans, uplanders. What was the question about?
Well, we were just wondering, are you, is it better for you to lease than to purchase? Has it worked out better for you?
Yes, it has.
I know they used to have maintenance issues years ago. I mean, this goes back quite a ways, and then they would have an aging fleet and trying to get them repaired. The cycle, I remember talking to Dr. Crowe about this a long time ago. The cycle, you know, they get a lot of warranty repair out of the vehicles, and they cycle them back and forth under the leases, so it's just an interesting mix. We have a lot more diverse vehicles than Children's Services does in our fleet, but we may want to look at that eventually for our fleet of vehicles. But then again, you know, we have cars that are seven years old with 25,000 miles on them. So our problem is the number of vehicles. It's never really the high miles, because most people are doing local driving.
Total of 28 total, so 13 midsize, four compact, four midsize, seven passenger vans.
You have the breakdown? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Instruct the clerk, excuse me, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for LOR 571021, Illyria Grafton Road, Eaton Township. Notice being on the Journal on September 8th and 15th, pre-bid meeting at 9:00 a.m. on September at the site, and bids to be open at 2:00 p.m. on September 26th in the hearing room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think because of notice issues, I'm not sure the commissioners were able to attend Betty Sutton's State of the District address yesterday out at Spitzer Conference Center. I know that we-
Excuse me, Mr. Cortez. I can't quite hear you.
That's a new one. Yes, it has been. I apologize. We didn't really get good notification that Betty Sutton was going to have a State of the District address out at Spitzer, so I don't think any of the commissioners are able to attend, given their busy schedules. But I was out there on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, and I will tell you that Betty did a nice job. It was very informative. She's been in the job just a little while now, and as I would say, a freshman Congresswoman, she seems to be positioning herself quite well with the boards that she's on, excuse me, the committees that she's on in Congress, and the things that she has brought back to not only the district but Lorraine County, and supported many things that are improving our community. So it was quite an informative address, and it was nice to see the people that came out there. So we were represented on your behalf, and congratulations to her for her fine job that she's doing in her first term. That's all I have for this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anisius of County District?
I may have one matter of pending litigation that I can give you a brief update on. That's about it.
Commissioners Report.
Well, Jim was at Betty Sutton's event. Three of us attended the Golden Age Pensioners Luncheon at Rosebud. It was a very nice lunch we had there. And then 7:30 yesterday morning, Betty and I attended the Team Lorraine County meeting with all the partners, and that went very well also. Last Sunday was the Labor Fest, and I'll tell you what, the labor unions put on a fantastic job, getting a lot of people out there, and all the entertainment that they had, and the great food, so it was a nice event. And that's all I have.
That covers my week, too, so go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, that just about says it all. I have no report other than that. Thank you.
Three amigos this week.
Four correspondents.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment.
Shirley R. Johnson-Overland, since my name was taken not in vain. I want to talk about silence. I will not be silent.
Good girl, Shirley.
Silence is better if one doesn't know what he or she is talking about. However, silence also means consent. So at times, consent to wrongs are unfortunate things. So it's better for democracy to encourage knowledge in speaking out. Thank you.
And thank you. I knew that you would have trouble with that comment.
I didn't have any trouble with it, Betty. I just disagreed with the intent of it. But it makes me want to think of all the comments, all the sayings about silence. The one that comes to mind is silence is golden, which goes with what you just, the comment you made today. I would like to see some student or a newspaper editor write an essay on all the different consequences of silence. Thank you.
That's a good challenge, Shirley. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I move we adjourn into executive session for the purposes outlined. Thank you for coming this morning.
I'll second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend. Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties, secure and safe Ohio RideShare makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion, while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. 1-800-825-RIDE, or register online at ohiorideshare.com. Point, click, ride.
Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover. She gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice to kind of turn your mood around when you come in the door, and they wagging their tails and jumping on you. And it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention. And she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes when she does something bad, or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look. So it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, Lily's going to play now." So...
Like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail. And then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from... I just really wanted a burger. So we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch. And I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing. And I was not very happy with her. So I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset. But we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life. And also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play. And it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroke him. So I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he's real playful, but he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered. And that's fine with me. So (laugh) he's not always wanting to play, you know? Because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, "Don't bother me, I won't bother you." And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. I found him on the Internet, actually. They had his picture on the Internet. And so I called, and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out. And there we were. So we rode our way home. So it was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me. And he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem. You know, even though he's a small dog, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes, and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, "Hey, Mom, it's okay." I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website, and I tell Salem, "Don't you want a little brother or sister?" Because they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Hello. My fellow commissioners and I are here at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel on Halloway Street, just south of Elary City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a Special Heart Medical Care License Tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the Special Heart Tag.
The Lorraine County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here. This is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you. Take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children aren't educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education or they hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this. To help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the street safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children. And of course, it's just like anything else with children. When you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up. You know, "Does anybody want to volunteer?" Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say "left, right, left," "behind you," "in front of you" once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us. And we even had one child that came up to us and said, "You know what, Ms. Spansky? We were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, 'Look left, look right, look left.'" So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, "Ooh." And we get up there and we tell them. And we even give them some trick questions. You know, we'll say, "Well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast, and I'm fast, and we can run." And of course, they're very enthusiastic. And, "No, we shouldn't do this." So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signals stop doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop, and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways. And they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and continue to look both ways because it's not safe. And they could fall. They could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large. And you're talking in kindergarten through 4th grade. Some of those children are very small children. The main thing is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them, "That train could take, you know, forever. It's way down there." But we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and 1st grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids. A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no, those kids are walking the wrong way. That's dangerous. I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat.
Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely. But there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without...
The second video, we show 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda. And they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo. What's up, Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you're dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left. So look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing. And he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross. Because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things. How to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing, not only from the children. We have received numerous cards. I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we've visited this year.
I think it was really nice because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
Um, I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's like cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight.
If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to. If they don't know how to cross without sidewalks, I'll tell them how to do that, too. Because that's what we learned.
Um, I think that it was good because I didn't feel like you had to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder, and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.
It's a good idea because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection. What happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to Safety Town, and they learn, "Left, look left, look right, look left again," and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did Safety Town, and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, "Matthew, remember Asimo?" And he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do and kind of even additional things that they maybe may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want. We can take a chance and run across the road. And I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs. We still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We are very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash. Litter lowers property values, and it's costly to clean up."
Keep Lorraine County beautiful. Put the lid on trash.
A river runs through our land, but we don't often see this river or understand how we affect it. It's a river with great power, power to change the face of where we live, our land, our economy, our health, and our children's future. We need to know this river, how our actions affect it, and how we can help protect it. Because this river is ours. This river is the Black River. The Black River is making a comeback. After years of devastating pollution, the changes we've made have made a difference. Now is the time, and we are the people, to make more changes and to protect what's been gained for the entire Black River watershed. The Black River drew people here, and its life-giving water gave them a reason to stay. From early Indian tribes to the first white settlers, the Black River is also the reason we became a leader in agriculture and industry, and why our population and economy boomed with shipbuilding, steel, and automobile industries. Throughout much of the 1900s, the Black River was valued mainly for drainage and disposal and its access to Lake Erie. But for those who grew up along the banks of the river, it had a different value and holds many sweet memories.
I grew up on an old beach ridge in Lorraine County, on a tributary of the Black River, a very small tributary. And I spent all my time outdoors, playing in the water, watching the tadpoles, you know, realizing that things live in the habitat of the stream.
Well, I grew up on West River Road, which Black River, of course, passes through. And I spent a lifetime, I guess you might say, on the Black River. And when we were growing up, we had a dock there behind our house. We had rowboat, you know, that type of thing. Built a lot of rafts on the Black River, too.
But memories of the Black River changed dramatically.
The river, when I was a kid, was someplace where you wouldn't even go around to play, and someplace you were told by your parents to keep away from because of the dirtiness of it and the pollution. I remember even fishing wasn't a good idea. I remember the pictures of the carp with cancer pulled out all over them, and the different fish with all deformed because of the different pollutions. So I remember as a kid, it was a pretty rough area.
The Black River was a rough area, a river with seriously deformed fish, with water so contaminated, it was determined unsafe for swimming or wading or fishing.
The Black River used to be known as the River of Fish Tumors. In 1965, one of the county commissioners called the Black River the main sewer line to Lake Erie. It was one of the 43 most polluted river systems in the Great Lakes. It had horrible industrial legacy problems up near Lorraine, and it had always had problems with sediment just because of the type of soils that the Black River is located on.
The Black River 20 years ago was as bad as anywhere in the nation. It was on the same scale as the Cuyahoga River and the Buffalo River and the Detroit River, which were really just about as bad as you can get. So it was one of the worst.
So it was one of the worst rivers in the country back then. Especially due, as far as carcinogens, which is like...
Industrial pollution had taken a heavy toll on the river. And one sign that could not be ignored was the fish population. International fish expert Roger Toma has a long history of studying fish habitats and many years of testing on the Black River.
When we first came to the Black River, the first monitoring of the Black River by the Ohio EPA was 1982. There are areas in the river where there were no fish living. We could catch no fish. Uh, that's pretty dramatic. That's, that takes very extreme environmental conditions to eliminate every single fish. 20 years ago, there were parts of the Black River that were, uh, an open cesspool. That were running rife with raw sewage. Uh, that were devoid of life except for the most tolerant organisms that eat sewage, such as, uh, an insect referred to as a bloodworm, bacteria, and fungus. 20 years ago, the Black River was like a witch's brew of environmental problems and environmental insults. It was, uh, I would characterize it as a dangerous river to be near.
Dangerous. That's the word used to describe a river that had once been rich in biodiversity, fish species, and animal life. It became a servant to industry and was nearly killed for it. April 2004. The progress has been remarkable. It was a major triumph when the Ohio Department of Health's 21-year advisory against swimming or wading in the lower Black River was finally lifted. At the same time, the river's status in regard to fish tumors was officially upgraded from impaired to in recovery. It was an event to celebrate, coming after years of change, including the closing of the U.S. Steel Coking Plant.
It's much better now, so much better. It's just almost unbelievable to those of us that were, were here early on. Uh, we had the coke plant closed down, which brought some improvement. And then they, they did a dredging, uh, in 1990 to take out the worst of the contaminated muds and sediment in the river.
To tell the story of the Black River's recovery, look back in time. You get a sense of how the damage started and the changes that began to turn it all around. In the late 1800s and early 1900s, you see the U.S. Steel Plant and the American Shipbuilding Company begin to pour industrial waste into the river. You see the first sanitary sewers pumping directly into the river, causing an increase in typhoid. And for more than 70 years, you see little or no regulation of what was discharged into the Black River. When did change begin? After the Cuyahoga River caught fire and gained national attention. The first federal environmental regulation, the Clean Water Act, was enacted shortly after that. Then came the Ohio EPA doing extensive studies on the Black River. But even after the regulations and dredging and improved wastewater treatment, more needs to be done. Why? Because the problems are not just from pollutants being discharged into the river. The problems are throughout the land drained by the Black River. The area called the watershed. The Black River watershed includes the land drained by the east branch, the west branch, Plum Creek, French Creek, and the main stem of the river where it empties into Lake Erie. To make real improvements, we needed to deal with the entire watershed on a grassroots level, to tell the people about what was happening and to make changes. And that's exactly what the Black River Remedial Action Plan was designed to do.
They couldn't just fix all the pipes, all the effluent coming from pipes. There had to be a change of mindset within the entire watershed. So they developed the remedial action plans to try to get to, to the local level, to try to get to individuals' homes and municipalities, to try to get them to take charge, to take control of how their watershed is developed and what their watershed will look like in the next 10, 15, 20 years.
The Remedial Action Plan, known as RAP, has been a great success in teaching and involving the people of the watershed.
It really offended me to find out that there was supposedly a meeting about the river and they claimed that no one showed up. And the plane dealer was saying that everyone out in the, uh, the Black River area was apathetic. And it's like, well, wait a minute. It must've been one of those public meetings that you, you put in the fine print of the paper. If people really knew about the condition of the Black River, they would really turn out and support it. And that's what we found. We really found a lot of support. People just did not know what was going on with the river.
So what was going on? The Black River was one of four Ohio rivers designated as an official area of concern. But citizens on the RAP Committee determined that the entire watershed should be designated an area of concern. Why? Well, because we've had serious impairments to the beneficial uses that a river should provide with fish that are not safe to eat and public beaches not safe for swimming or even wading. It's true, we've made remarkable progress, but we've also uncovered new problems.
With the swimming advisory that had been lifted and the incidence of deformities in fish decreasing, um, I think those have really been good goals for the Black River and ones to really be celebrated. But I think with that, um, you know, it's, it's learning that there are other issues out there, cause those were so highlighted for such a long time, that now it's really stepping up and getting excited and motivated about fixing some of the other problems that were a little bit hidden.
The hidden problems are the ones that aren't fixed by regulating or closing industries. They're called non-point sources of pollution.
I think the main problem is the non-point source issue. And when we say non-point source pollution, we mean those types of pollution that are not associated with a pipe coming out of a factory or, or a wastewater treatment plant. But actually, the kind of runoff that comes off of streets. It comes off of your yard. It comes off of, uh, an agricultural setting, if you will, or a feedlot. And those kinds of quick runoffs can have great deal of impact on the watershed and the river, particularly as it relates to the fish, the nutrients, and of course, the habitat where the fish and the microorganisms live. Simply put, if you can point to where the pollution is coming from, that would be a point source. Cleaning up point source problems are easy because you can locate them. Cleaning up non-point source problems are more difficult because it is so diverse. It is so watershed-wide.
Besides adding pollutants to the water, we're literally losing our land. The soil in our watershed is being washed away. That's why you often see the river looking muddy and brown. In areas of the upper Black River watershed, more than 20% of our land is eroding at a rate of at least five tons per acre every year. The proof is in the picture. This is the mouth of the Black River before a rain. And this is the same place after a rain. What you see is a plume of sediment emptying into Lake Erie. What you see is the soil we're losing. Over 17,000 acres eroding at excessive levels, with more than 80% of it cropland. To fix the problems in the Black River watershed, we need to understand how each of us may be causing the erosion and non-point pollution. First, take this little quiz. What percentage of the land in our Black River watershed is used for industrial purposes? Would you guess 25%? 15%? 10? Or 1? How about agricultural? Maybe 20 or 30%? Or is it 40 or 50%? The truth is, only 1% of our watershed is truly industrial. Over half, 51%, is used for agriculture. Though it may be changing, our land use is still clearly dominated by farms. What about the rest of our land? 38% is rural residential. 7% is urban residential. And 3% is used for commercial purposes. The more we understand how we impact the river and the land, the better we can address non-point pollution problems. We are the people of the Black River watershed. We are farmers, homeowners, developers, public officials, and students. We are the ones who can make a difference. Farms dominate much of the landscape in our area and how we practice farming in the watershed has a great impact. When farmers protect fields and riverbanks from erosion and use the most efficient means of fertilizer application, it keeps soil and fertilizer from overloading the river.
From a selfish point of view, it's important because the soil we lose is the topsoil, which contains the, uh, more of the nutrients than the subsoil does. And so that every bit of, of topsoil that we can save is something that we don't have to replace in, by way of added fertilizer and so forth. But secondly, it, I think that it is just a, a good practice on the part of farmers to try to keep the, uh, streams and, uh, small rivers and so forth as clean as possible. Because we don't want any more direct regulation than, than is necessary. The more we do voluntarily, the less likely we are to be forced to do it by government regulation. And farmers are fairly independent cusses. Um, we, we like to whine and complain and, and, but we don't want to be told how to work things.
When farmers work things themselves, the improvements can really make a difference.
I'd say in the last 20 years, agriculture has really addressed some of the problems that we had from years ago as far as fertilizer runoff, manure runoff. Of course, in Lorain County now, we don't have a lot of livestock operations left. So the manure runoff, I think, is probably kind of taking care of itself because of the lack of the, uh, dairy farms and beef farms. Uh, of course, the government has promoted filter strips along the edges of a lot of the cricks and stuff. And, uh, I think that's helped as far as runoff goes for fertilizer.
Some farmers have used measures to keep the soil on the ground in their own fields.
Well, I think that basically there are two practices. One is that we have installed grassed waterways in a number of our fields where the slope is sufficient that if we were to till through those, um, areas, why we would experience some erosion. More importantly, the other practice is that we have gone to essentially 100% no-till, which means that we neither mow, board plow, nor chisel plow any of our land. And it is, uh, through the use of a no-till drill for small seeds and a no-till corn planter that we're able to do this. And by not disturbing the soil, we, uh, tend to be able to keep it in place rather than having it erode.
Uh, one of the leading edges, I think, is this GPS technology that John Deere's been promoting for the last several years. Um, the farmers are mapping all of their, uh, crops so they know where to put on more or less fertilizer. In other words, it's not just a blanket where we're gonna put on X amount of pounds of fertilizer in a given area and it's gonna help some of the poor areas. And then, uh, where the better land is, where you don't need that much fertilizer, GPS is, gives them the opportunity to cut back there so we don't have this excess amount of fertilizers and pesticides that are going into the streams.
Farmers, homeowners, and developers along the Black River can also use a simple and natural technique to reduce erosion, flooding, and chemical runoff. It's called a riparian border. It's a buffer strip of plants right along the water's edge, such as trees, shrubs, and some native plants and grasses. A riparian border can make a huge difference in holding the soil in place. And that soil also helps clean the water by filtering out pollutants in runoff water.
All right, one of the important things in protecting the Black River and other water systems is having a healthy riparian corridor. Uh, one of the main things about a riparian corridor would be woody vegetation because they put down roots, which as you can see, are, are pretty extensive. They hold the stream banks in place. These particular roots here have held this stream bank in place long enough for this large tree to grow here. Now, probably some of the earlier floods that we have had have washed away some of these, some of the soil from away from these roots. But it is still continuing to hold this stream bank in place where without this tree, this, this whole stream bank would probably be eroded away and add to the sediment woes of the river. As we increase the impervious surfaces along the river, there are more and more water getting to the river faster. Uh, it's whisked off of our streets and our parking lots and our roadways. So the river actually rises and falls more quickly and with greater frequency than it used to. What used to be a 100-year flood may now come at 75 years or at worst, maybe even 50 years. We're seeing flooding at a, at a more rapid pace. Can you imagine this whole river, which I am probably six feet above the, the river's surface right now, rising up? So that this rag, which is probably at least 10 feet above the river's surface right now, floating along the river and getting snagged by this branch. This entire river raised up 10 feet and then fell back down. This is happening more and more frequently because we have more and more impervious surface and more and more water is getting to the river system instead of just soaking into the soil and down into groundwater.
The loss of farmland due to development is the reason we have more streets, parking lots, and rooftops. More and more water flows into the river, giving it the power to cut right through turns in a bank. When that happens, water levels rise too high and flooding occurs. This is one example of a serious cut. On the west branch of the Black River at Hughes Road, the river is actually trying to change course due to the increased flow of runoff water. When the river winds, this bridge will be lost and tons of valuable topsoil will be washed downriver. You can see the effects here, too, on the east branch of the river in Grafton. The water is muddy brown from too much sediment. The banks are cut with trees starting to fall. And the stream bottom is dug down to the bedrock, leaving no place for bugs and crayfish to live. That means no food for fish. So what can farmers do to reduce the amount of soil and pesticides entering the river? Well, they can plant riparian borders along creeks and the river. Use methods of farming that reduce the loss of soil. And use precision methods of applying fertilizer and pesticide. We've all seen it. Land is being developed at a rapid pace in our watershed. So developers also play a key role in protecting our water quality and our land. More and more of our land is being covered by houses, streets, and parking lots. With less soil to absorb the rainwater, too much water is rushing into the Black River after a rain. That water is carrying pollutants right into the river because there's not enough open land and plant life to act as a sponge and absorb the water. Besides pollution, the river becomes overloaded with sediment. And as a result, we see floods occurring more often with water moving at a much greater force.
I think we, we just need to, to look at places that have already been developed, such as the Cuyahoga River, um, places like Eastlake that receive waters that have already been developed upstream and now they're dealing with flooding. They're dealing with siltation and so on. This is what could happen to other rivers that are perhaps less developed right now if, if we don't take some action and make sure that the kind of development we're doing is sound.
So what kind of development is sound? Well, the ideal answer is simple. We maintain and develop the cities and townships that already exist. But when we do allow new developments in rural areas, what should they be like? Some answers come from the Countryside Program, a nonprofit group helping Northeast Ohio communities protect natural resources.
What we're trying to do is just help the developer understand what options may be available that will increase the environmental value of the development project. Usually that means finding ways to set aside open space in the right places to reduce the impact of that development project on the environment. So we're looking for ways to reduce impervious surface on the property, to increase the filtering and management of stormwater, to preserve habitat, and so on.
One development that's done all those things is Avon Berry Lakes in Avon, developed by Joe Scaletta.
I am a home builder and land developer. And I develop conservation developments, not just... not your typical, what I call cookie cutter subdivision, where you're building at every inch of land.
Using a concept called clustering, Avon Berry homes are built closer together on smaller lots. Now, that means less pavement, allowing for nearly half of the development to be open space. Stormwater is retained in natural ponds, where it's filtered through the soil and then flows slowly to the river. A 23-acre environmental preserve was left in place. It's not only a beautiful place for residents here, with walking trails, bridges, and wildlife, but the trees on the land help prevent flooding.
And I think having that area of runoff, where we can still encourage the wetlands and protect the wetlands, and put Mother Nature's floodplains to use as it was originally intended, flooding areas, temporary holding basins, will all benefit all of us. And conservation development is a good way to protect all of our natural resources, certainly Black River.
The homebuyers are more sophisticated today, and they're also concerned about the environment when they're building a new home. The problem is, the codes of most cities are outdated, antiquated. They have large lots, large streets, and don't take any consideration of the aspects of the land. They just say, "We want 150 by 150-foot lot, we want 200 feet frontage," whatever it is. And by doing that, typically, a developer has to come in and clearcut the entire site.
We need to change the way we think of developments, and for certain, the public needs to demand land-use codes that protect the environment and give us a better quality of life in our neighborhoods.
There's a drawbridge mentality. The last person in the township wants the drawbridge to come up. That's the last...we're the last ones, you know? And by law, we cannot say, "No more development here." All we can do is control it.
Lorraine County is on a verge of a lot of development coming from the west, from Cleveland. And I think we have the opportunity now to establish those land-use practices that we're not going to see just subdivision after subdivision, without green space, without water quality protection, and riparian zone protection. If we can do that now, I think we're going to really help the river in the next 20 years.
I think the problem with most homeowners is they really don't understand that what they do has an impact. I think they see one small or large property and feel they're just a small part of the big puzzle, and what they do really makes no difference. And I think somehow, they need, I mean, we all need to understand more as individuals what impact we really do have.
How do homeowners impact soil erosion and water quality? With our landscaping practices, septic systems, and chemicals used on lawns and flower beds.
If one person dumps a little fertilizer, a little chemical on his lawn, it's probably not a big deal to the water that comes out at the mouth of the Black River. But if 1,000 or 1,500 or all the other people on the same watershed do the same thing, it's a mammoth difference.
Home sewage treatment can also make a mammoth difference. In rural areas without sanitary sewer systems, each home treats sewage individually with underground septic tanks. These tanks were often installed as long ago as the 1930s and 40s. Even 20-year-old systems are overloaded with today's modern appliances, like dishwashers. Many of our septic systems are now outdated and usually not maintained by homeowners.
They need to be pumped out periodically. There are motors in them, moving parts, aerators. Those need to be maintained, run properly, so that the water coming out on the clean side is in fact clean.
In many cases, that water coming out of the older septic systems is not clean. And that means human waste is going directly from our septic systems into the river.
The new homeowners, I don't think, impacted very much, because all the sewage systems are on lot. In the old homes, where the sewage systems aren't maintained properly, some of them have direct outlets to the river or to creeks and streams that go to the river, and they would cause a lot of untreated sewage or effluent to go there.
The general thought is, if my toilet flushes, then my system's working. But what is happening is, the wastewater is going down our drains from our home into the tank, and the tank is discharging to a pipe, and the pipe is going to a stream that goes to the Black River that goes to Lake Erie, and it's basically a direct shot.
Septic systems aren't a priority to the homeowner until they back up or fail. Failing means that somewhere in your yard, you've got sewage water, effluent bubbling out, and then they panic. Sometimes homeowners try to fix it themselves by taking a direct line to the creek or river. And of course, that's terrible. But there's just a lack of education, a lack of desire to know about it and do anything with it until it's a problem. And as long as there's not a density of them and they're spread out, it's not as bad. But you get into a highly-developed area where the houses are close together, it would be much worse. Now, everything is concentrated on lot. Your sewage system is treated on lot, and it is disposed on lot, where it actually soaks into the ground by way of an ad grade system or a Wisconsin mound, which the water, the sewage is pumped up into a large amount of sand, and it filters down through it. So it never leaves your lot, and that way, it doesn't impact the river at all.
What's the solution for homeowners with old sewage treatment systems? They should maintain or upgrade what they have, and where it's possible, install sanitary sewers. Landscaping is another way homeowners impact our watershed. Just like farmers, homeowners need to plant riparian borders to hold soil in place along the edge of ponds, creeks, and the river itself. Planting grass right up to the edge of the water does not hold the soil in place. The roots are too shallow. And if nothing holds the soil in place, especially after a rain, the riverbank gets washed away. Besides erosion of the land and loss of soil, it also causes overload of sediment in the river. Nooks and crannies on the river bottom become blanketed with silt. And this literally suffocates the bugs that fish eat and can clog fish gills. So what can homeowners do? Well, these are simple rules for landscaping to protect our watershed. Plant trees and shrubs along the water's edge, not grass. Don't mow up to the riverbank. And don't dump grass clippings in the river. Some homeowners have even left natural areas on their property. Dane Adams wanted to attract birds and wildlife. But there's another benefit we can all share.
And so as water runoff in that area filters through the wetland and then drains out, the plants and the microhabitat there tend to filter that water and make it cleaner going into the river.
Working together, we can improve and protect our watershed. People from the townships and the cities, environmental groups, farmers, and homeowners are getting together to talk about the problems and share solutions on an advisory committee.
It's great to bring all of these players together at the table, which doesn't seem to happen a lot, that you get township trustees, along with city people, along with concerned citizens. So you kind of run the gamut with concerns that are out there. And, you know, we don't want to be duplicating efforts.
The word is getting out that improving and protecting the Black River watershed demands voluntary effort, and in some cases, new regulations, such as how we handle stormwater in our communities.
The things that are important to us is certainly stormwater management, proper control and method of that. What takes place in the extreme southern part of Lorraine County, a higher elevation, all of that stormwater flows down to places like Amherst and Lorraine. And their development, if not handled properly in terms of the additional stormwater runoff, will cause flooding downstream towards the north here.
Too often in the past, one city would focus on their needs, and, for example, stormwater. And they thought the solution to the stormwater was to get the water away as soon as possible, as quickly as possible. When you do that, all you do is create headaches for the person downstream. You destroy habitat, and you just transfer your problems to the community next door. And you're not being a good neighbor. So I think there needs to be a way where communities can communicate, can work together on stormwater problems, so they're not creating headaches for one another and costly headaches, really, to save money overall.
In planning for new developments within municipalities, the city officials must consider how much of that land is going to be covered by impervious surfaces. Impervious surfaces will not allow water to transfer down into the soil and be naturally cleansed.
City and township officials can also help bring about something new to many of us: recreational use of the Black River.
The amount of wood ducks and things that nest along it, and, like I say, the raccoons, herons, the deer frequent it, cross it, it's beautiful. But as far as water sports or fishing, it's not used like rivers in other states or different places. Most people think the Black River is just a drainage, and it's not.
In the next 20 years, I think you're going to have a lot more recreational use of the Black River and Lake Erie. Hopefully, we will start having open space, public, accessible locations, so that public can come and look like we are here today at this beautiful scenery, and to really enjoy the benefits of places like the Black River.
The future of the Black River watershed is in the hands of the young. Students need to understand the river and have the joy of going right to the water.
This has been the first year that I've been teaching that the warning has been lifted, and it was okay, you know, to get into it. We've done the waders, et cetera, but a lot of them just like to just get in it. And that's the fun of it, you know, like really exploring it and looking around and seeing what they can see. Well, one of the first things I want them to understand is the concept of watershed and how, where they live in respect to that, that they are in the Black River watershed, et cetera. Elyria High School actually borders the river. We can see the river from our parking lot. And with some groups, like environmental groups, et cetera, we've gone down and we've seen, like, some of the activity, evidence of the activity. We've done cleanups, we've done water quality studies down at the river.
Some of us got waders, some of us just went in the water. And Ms. Wiki's actually a really good teacher, because she would sit there and she'd just point out all this stuff to us as a teenager. We always go up in the rocks, just hiking, everything. We'd go behind the falls and all that. But in ecology, we did learn a lot. I learned, like, people digging up dirt, it'll cause silt in the river, and then the fish will breathe it in, and that's a really big problem, especially with the Black River. The fish will breathe it in, and then they'll just die.
I think that through the class, I actually learned more than I ever knew before, because I always have been, like, interested in, like, being involved with, like, the environment, but I didn't really know a whole lot about it.
And I think it's cool, because I think, especially for high school students, if you visibly learn, you know what I mean, like visually, it's, I think you soak it in better, you know what I mean? Like, you can be talking about it in the classroom, taking notes about it, but then, when you come down here and she's sitting there and explaining things, like even the history.
Since you live here, you don't really think about it, like, it makes a difference if you keep around here clean, too, you know? But then afterwards, I thought about that, like, when I go down here now, I like, I look at the trash and stuff, and I think about that kind of thing, and I'm keeping it clean around here.
I think if you learn more about it and you realize what it's doing to the river, then obviously, you're going to stop. Like us, how much we learn, it makes you think twice about, like you said, just throwing something on the ground or just your everyday lifestyle. It really does make you change, makes you think.
There is a lot of gloom and doom environmental studies, because humans have impacted the planet so greatly. But on the other hand, when they can see studies and they can actually, you know, see data about water quality, that things have changed, Lake Erie itself, I mean, has changed tremendously in my lifetime, then it gives them a reason to modify practices or to, you know, just live like good stewards of the earth, because it can make a difference, and it does.
We are making a difference. After improvements to Elyria's wastewater collection system and upgrades at the Grafton Wastewater Treatment Plant, the U.S. EPA determined that organisms living at the bottom of the east branch of the Black River have fully recovered. We were the first remedial action plan in Ohio to show significant improvement. And now we're the first RAP on the U.S. side of the Great Lakes to completely restore an impairment in a portion of the watershed.
This shows the potential that the east branch can achieve. If the bottom-dwelling creatures, if the first rung on the food ladder can improve to such an extent that they're exceptional, they're considered exceptional, it shows the potential for the east branch to achieve great things, even in the fish habitat and other wildlife habitat around the sub watershed.
The improvements are incredible, but we don't want to stop there. We want to keep going. But I don't think we're at that step yet, where everybody realizes that their farm or their septic tank could be causing the river down here in Lorraine to be a little more cloudy than the nice blue tones that we like to see here.
We must change our mindset, we must live responsibly, we must leave riparian corridors, little buffer systems along the watersheds, we must try to maintain our septic tanks, we must develop neighborhoods responsibly.
I think if people have personal contact, whether it's recreational or any other interactions with the river, that they have, definitely have a much closer connection and come to realize the impact of their actions on the watershed. Definitely, the out-of-sight, out-of-mind thing has got to go by the wayside. People really need to be reconnected and get it that they are a part of this whole picture.
We're all in this together, the people of the Black River watershed. This is our river.
Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to our first meeting in September, September 4th. Commissioner Laurie is the dog lady today.
We have a scared one today.
Come here. Look what I am. Look. Shy. Look. Come here.
He loves Janero.
Aw, he's so scared. See, somebody needs to come to our dog kennel and take this one home. Somebody needs to treat him really good, so he won't be scared anymore.
I see you have any more. Whoops. You didn't like that.
You don't want the cookie? Look. Normally, they bring me the small dogs, but we must be out of small dogs today, so we have a nice golden retriever. Would make somebody a good pet, just needs some love and care. Here, baby, look. Cookie. No, he doesn't want a cookie. So come down to our dog kennel and pick out a pet for yourself. And if you want to see what we have, you could always check our website if you want to make the trip down. Thank you very much. That's a beautiful dog. That's a beautiful dog.
A thought for this morning, some may disagree with this, probably, surely, but I'm going to give it anyway. Silence is one of the hardest arguments to refute. And we have a proclamation for September as the National Preparedness Month. You want me to read this, Tom? It says some good things, so I will. It says, "Whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security has declared September as National Preparedness Month, a nationwide effort held to encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and schools; and whereas the goal of National Preparedness Month is to increase public awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies, and encourage individuals to take action; and whereas families across America need to create a family disaster plan, so that each person knows what to do, where to go, and how to contact loved ones; and whereas September 2008 National Preparedness Month will provide Americans with a variety of opportunities to learn more about preparing for emergencies, including natural disasters and potential terrorist threat; and whereas National Preparedness Month brings together an amazing coalition of partners to make citizen preparedness a priority for every city, every neighborhood, and every home across America, homeland security is a shared responsibility. This month will provide Americans with a variety of opportunities to learn more about ways they can prepare for an emergency, get an emergency supply kit, establish a family communication plan, and become better aware of threats that may impact communities. It will also provide them with several opportunities to volunteer, or get first aid, or CPR training. And whereas this month will also symbolize an opportunity to pay tribute to America's first responders, who put themselves at risk for the safety of their fellow citizens, these brave police officers, firefighters, and emergency service personnel exemplify the compassion and commitment that helps strengthen our country. We will be forever grateful for their service and sacrifice." Now therefore, it be resolved that the Lorain County Board of Commissioners hereby joins in declaring the month of September as National Preparedness Month in Lorain County, Ohio, and urges all residents of Lorain County to learn how to be ready for the unexpected. We would like to present this to our EMA Director, Tom Kelly.
Can I say one thing, real quick, Commissioner? Two things, actually. We received a grant from the Citizens Corps to put together 2,000 packets, informational packets, on emergency planning for homes, and we'll be going door-to-door with our community response team volunteers during this month sometime. Picked out some neighborhoods. We didn't want them walking on the long streets that are out in the open, but places like the Crest Haven Lot in Elyria Township, they have a whole entire village of Rochester kept in those type of places, and they'll be getting those on their doorknobs. We put them in a recycled bag up dance here, he'll like that, too. But, and also, we put together a one-hour presentation on how to put a home emergency plan together, how to practice that, and we've been advertising that for church groups and citizens, church groups, block watch groups, that type of thing, too, so. That'll be going on this month also.
Wonderful. Tell us about the email that I got the other day.
Oh, as you know, we received the Hero's Award for an agency from the Red Cross, and you attended, Mr. Kayla attended, last month, and the State of Ohio Emergency Management Agency puts together a newsletter every two months, and they put that, two weeks, I'm sorry, and they put that article in the Chronicle Telegram, our pictures in the newsletter this time, so it goes to all the agencies and the governor's office and that type of thing, all the county emergency management agencies also. So I forwarded it on to you, too, you should be sleeping on any email.
It was very nice. Thank you, and congratulations again.
Thanks.
Anything else you want to tell us?
No.
You're not going on vacation anytime soon?
No, I think I burned most of that up this year.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for the, great job you did on that.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, there will be no presentation by Solid Waste, we're going to do that next week at 10 o'clock.
Next week? Okay, thanks.
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we are transferring $20,000 from our general fund into Dog and Kennel Fund this week, and what we're going to do is we're going to be putting in some fencing around the backside of the dog kennel, which will give a chance for the dogs to have an outside run, and we're also going to be eliminating the two-story cages, the up-and-down cages, because we can't use the top, and we're going to be putting in some larger cages in the dog kennels, so that we can accommodate larger dogs. We're also going to be having, I just talked to Karen Davis this morning, there's going to be panels in between each cage, so that the dogs can't go nose to nose, in order to eliminate spreading diseases between the different animals. So happy to say that we're doing some much-needed improvements at our dog pound, and I'm looking forward to see that getting done.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the airport, a men lease agreement with John Winn at Lorain County Regional Airport is originally approved by Lorain County Regional Airport Authority, and approved for 192006 to reflect the $1 million liability coverage provided by the condo owner, plus $3 million to be provided by the condo association.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a question, we're lowering the liability, so is this in order to do some cost savings for us, or John Winn, or who's reaping the benefits from this?
It's John Winn itself, and what happened was the airport authority approved this 99-year lease for the two new hangars that are going up. And as they got ready to implement the actual condo purchase agreements, they realized they were, John Winn was going to have to have $3 million liability insurance. Their insurance provider said, you know, most agencies require $3 million, and so we took it to our risk manager, she reviewed it with Corsa, and they said, yeah, $3 million is a better level, and so what we're doing is asking that you reduce there from $5 million to $3 million. Okay?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated in summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Commissioner, I do have a couple brief hiring, hirings at the county home, and would like to discuss in what you in executive session is permissible subject under the sunshine law, so at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, if we can have what I hope is a short executive session, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved waive the reading of the same from Lorain County Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes, 202008.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Community Development instruct the clerk to advertise notice of public hearings for the updated Lorain County subdivision regulations. Notice will be in the town hall on September 8th and 15th, hearings to be held at 10:00 AM on September 18th and 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a quick question, when we have something like this that affects all of Lorain County, is it that cost prohibitive to have that, something like this and advertise in both newspapers? I know we try to rotate back and forth.
No, I don't, I don't think so at all, Commissioner. I, I remember when the policy was developed a number of years ago, because we were spending so much on advertising, but if you want both papers, it's, it's not that, it's not that expensive, a couple hundred dollars to advertise them in both. So mainly the things that affect the broader base community would be like CDVG, and CHIP, and things like that. If you, the board so desires, we can certainly make sure that both of those get put into both newspapers.
Do you, do you think that would be a good idea to change our past policy, as, as far as rotating every, each newspaper?
Just a question, Kristen, do we send out notices to the political subdivisions as well?
The county subdivision regulations only apply to the 18 unincorporated areas. A copy of the draft set of regulations has been sent to each of the 18 unincorporated areas for them to review and to send comments to us, so they have been notified on an individual level. Any cities or villages have their own subdivision regulations, so they don't fall under our jurisdiction.
Okay, so that, putting it in the journal would not really benefit anything?
It wouldn't really benefit, maybe Amherst would get the journal versus the Chronicle, but the majority of the township areas do get the Chronicle.
But Amherst has been notified by us?
They have been notified personally, yes.
Okay, I'll withdraw that request, then. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Job and family, a men resolution 08400, adopted June 5, 2008, approving payment of the general, county general fund mandated share is now outlined payable to Job and Families in the revised amount of $1,242,587, in compliance with ORC 510116 through 161, payable October 2008 through May 2009.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
There's just one thing about this, if I'm not mistaken, it's lower than we anticipated.
Drop 15, a little over $15,000 from what we proved in, what we, Chris has proved in, Jim.
Good. It's a $15,000 less in case Hal didn't pick it up. That's good, good news.
Thank you, David.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Our sanitary, approve the additional engineering service proposal from Kaye McCartney and Associates Mansfield, the amount of $24,400 for the Shade and Road sanitary sewer extension. This will be paid from professional services account. City Valerian Ordnance Number 200839 affirms that future reimbursement accounting parameters for engineering to be required to construct said project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Perchange Order One to Calsteen Inc., the amount of $2,722.29 to adjust quantities from final field measurements for the Crest Haven Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrade sewer district improvements to be paid from Crest Haven Construction.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Children's Services instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for lease of 13 new, four compact, four midsize, and seven passenger van vehicles for Children's Services. Notice being in Chronicle on September 5th and 12th, and bids to be opened at 2:00 PM on September 19th in the Commissioner's hearing room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We don't get state bid pricing on these?
Which one was that, Commissioner?
These are leases, Laurie.
Oh, the Children's Services?
Oh.
They, they do this about every two years. They, they found it to be more cost-effective to lease their vehicles than to maintain their fleet. I'm, I'm going to be interested in how to make it happen. It's been a few years, so I need to, I want to go talk to them, see how they're doing with that, because we didn't, we bought our fleet, so there may be some advantages. I know they continue to do it, so it must be productive for them.
Somebody's here from, you want to come up and talk about that?
Good morning.
The way it's written on your agenda, the vehicles that we're going to lease is wrong. We have 13 new midsize, four new compact, four new midsize, seven passengers. We're actually going down on the vans that we're going to get, so that we can save on gas. So I think right now, we have like about 10 vans, uplanders. What was the question about?
Well, we were just wondering, are you, is it better for you to lease than to purchase? Has it worked out better for you?
Yes, it has, yeah.
I know they used to have maintenance issues years ago, and this goes back quite a ways, and then they would have an aging fleet and trying to get them repaired. The cycle, I remember talking to Dr. Crowe about this a long time ago, the cycle, you know, they, they get a lot of warranty repair out of the vehicles, and they cycle them back and forth under the leases, so it's just an interesting mix. We have a lot more diverse vehicles than Children's Services does in our fleet, but we may want to look at that eventually for our fleet of vehicles. But then again, you know, we have cars that are seven years old with 25,000 miles on them, so our problem is the number of vehicles, it's never really the high miles, because most people are doing local driving.
Total of 28 total, so 13 midsize, four compact, four midsize, seven passenger vans.
You have to break down, okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk, excuse me, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for LOR 571021, Larry Grafton Road, Eden Township. Notice being on the Journal on September 8th and 15th, pre-bid meeting at 9:00 AM on September at the site, and bids to be opened at 2:00 PM on September 26th in the hearing room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think because of notice issues, I'm not sure the Commissioners were able to attend, Betty Sutton's stated the district address yesterday out at Spitzer Conference Center. I know that we, that's a new one. Yes, it has been, I apologize. We didn't really get good notification that Betty Sutton was going to have a state-of-the- district address out at Spitzer, so I don't think any of the Commissioners are able to attend, given their busy schedules, but I was out there on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, and I will tell you that Betty did a nice job, it was very informative. She's been in the job just a little while now, and as I would say, a freshman Congresswoman, she seems to be positioning herself quite well with the boards that she's on, excuse me, the committees that she's on in Congress, and the things that she has brought back to not only the district, but Lorain County, and supported many things that are improving our community, so it was quite an informative address, and it was nice to see the people that came out there, so we were represented on your behalf, and congratulations to her for a fine job that she's doing in her first term. That's all I have for this morning, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, is this County Minister?
I may have one matter of pending litigation that I can give you a brief update on. That's about it.
Commissioners' report.
Well, Jim was at Betty Sutton's event, three of us were, attended the Golden Age Pensioners Luncheon at Rosebud, it was a very nice lunch we had there. And then 7:30 yesterday morning, Betty and I attended a Team Lorain County meeting with all the partners, and that went very well also. Last Sunday was the Labor Fest, and I'll tell you what, the labor unions put on a fantastic job, getting a lot of people out there, and all the entertainment that they had, and the great food, so it was, it was a nice event. And that's all I have.
That covers my week, too, so go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, that just about says it all. I have no report other than that. Thank you.
Three amigos this week.
Okay. Four respondents.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment.
Shirley R. Johnson-Overland, since my name was taken not in vain, I want to talk about silence, I will not be silent. Good girl, Shirley. Silence is better if one doesn't know what he or she is talking about. However, silence also means consent, so at times, so at times consent to wrongs are unfortunate things, so it's better for democracy to encourage knowledge and speaking out. Thank you.
And thank you, I knew that you would have trouble with that comment.
I didn't have any trouble with it, Betty. I just disagreed with, with the intent of it, but it makes me want to think of all the comments, all the sayings about silence, the one that comes to mind is silence is golden, which goes with what you just, what you, the comment you made today. I would, I would like to see some student or a newspaper editor write an essay on all the different consequences of silence. Thank you.
That's a good challenge, Shirley. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I move you adjourn into executive session for the purposes outlined. Thank you for coming this morning.
I'll second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend. Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties, secure and safe Ohio rideshare makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion, while it lowers